So now I'm gonna go and I'm gonna thank you, but I'm gonna beg you to not make a decision on this today. Because you do not have all the information you need. Monica did a great presentation, because that's what he does, because he's good at his job. God bless them for finding him, and he's a good soul. However, there are some issues here that are not right, and if they're not right, they're not right. That's what I got to say about it, and I hope you all consider it. You don't need to make this decision today. Who needs to trust tomorrow? Raise your hand. Nobody. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Max Kimoroff again for Community Association of Poipu Aina Estates. I got the sense that maybe you, the commission has a feeling of a rush of a deadline. You guys mentioned June 24th is the deadline where you, if you know action is taken, the HPM's application is automatically approved, but I do recall reading in the commission rules that this commission can ask for an extension, I believe a 30 or 60 day extension. Maybe, maybe you all want to think about that. I mean, that's 60 days, you know, you allow my client and other people to intervene and let's have a full hearing, because once again, we would ask the hard questions of HPM. I sit here and I listen to Monica speak on behalf of HPM and HPM's representative speak, and I have a lot of questions for them. You know, I scratch my head and says, well, you can't accept what they see as base value. It needs to be cross-examined. Let me cross-examine them. You know, I misspoke earlier, you know, because I was at a disadvantage. I didn't have my client sitting next to me to, for, to me on the dates, but I misspoke. My clients got a letter from Monica address on April 22nd. The letter is dated April 22nd. That's when they found out about this matter about HPM's building supplies, giant monstrosity of a building facility. My clients engage in conversations with HPM via email. They were talking about, oh, and they try, my clients tried to work with HPM, oh, limit the size, their concerns about the color, you know, the pure white, you know, why is this thing, you know, all white against this green scenery? So they weren't engaged in conversations via email, but it suddenly stopped. The ball was in their court. My clients gave them a list of things that they wanted that HPM to, you know, to consider and, you know, amend in their plans, but the conversation stopped. And then they realized, oh, and my clients, you know, being good people they are, they thought, oh, they're gonna act on one, my client's suggestions, but no, nothing was done. They came to the main tent hearing or the day before they, look, the hearing is already tomorrow, main tent, we better file something. So they did on their own. So then my clients come to the main tent and they see what's going on. And after that, you know, they started thinking, hey, we need to hire a lawyer, because this is bigger than what they realized. And I think this is, as you can see, my dear commission, that this is huge. That do not rush, like everybody's saying, to make a decision, ask for an extension. Is that time? Please consider again the intervention by myself, by my clients, because we will be filing an appeal. And realize this is not gonna stop here, then let's give everybody an opportunity to question directly.
Two minutes.
Cross-examine HPM. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure, I would just respectfully request to be able to refuse the argued petition again. So I'd just like to correct the record, because again, neighbor service is a big issue.
We're, yeah, we're, we're, we're on to the, the agency hearing. We're trying to wrap up the testimonies at this point to get to, to get through that. So is there anyone else in the public who can testify?
Hi, everybody. My name is Michael McDarnick. I was on the sign-up list earlier, but I had to leave. I worked with HPM. I was with a trust company in Honolulu for 20 years with Michael again, and now we're with HPM. I had to leave today because I had a trust delivery to a local person who lives up, up in Kapai. It's been a house for a son. I left here to deliver that trust. It's very happy to speak for, you know, we had to ship them here from Hilo, which we could have done in here. Our trust plant that we worked at for 20 years was in Honolulu, directly across, I mean, I don't know if you guys know where it all, that country adventures is. Directly across the neighborhood in, in Honolulu. Our saw was probably about from here to the adjacent building away. In 20 years, we had not one complaint. A lot of these people's homes in Poipu Aina, I delivered almost all of them. All of them. We had to do wide load escorts. They all wanted steep roofs. They had no problems when we brought it there at 4:00 in the morning. The neighbors had no problems across the road in Honolulu when we brought it to them. You know, we don't discriminate. We, we're here for help, people. We're not here for take jobs from the union. We're here to work with the union, as we have been for years. We've done many jobs. I deliver many jobs. I know foremen and everybody on first day dates, they see me coming in, they excited. It's trust day, you know? I, I'm for this trust plant. We just need a place to continue helping out people. I delivered all of, almost, almost, if not all, the, the four of housing, you know, everywhere, Hawaiian homes. Constantly bringing houses out there all the time. We want to still help out and do that, you know, and we did it for 20 years in Honolulu. Nobody that completely had, I went door to door trying to ask people for testimonies over there. Everybody was all for us. We didn't hear anything at all. As far as trucks going in and out of, of Toa, there's a ton of trucks going in and out there every day. If you ask me, there's 50, 100 doom buggies going in and out every, every day, you know, and I'm not here to argue with what they say. I'm just stating facts. From my point of view, from where I worked for 20 years, I have had no issues. When we deliver, we wait till people wake up. We follow the rules, and we do everything viable, you know, and as I said, I had to leave today to deliver a house to somebody. I want to continue to do that, and I will. You know, I, I, I get where they're coming from. Noise is not an issue. And we did all the rules. They were our customers. They got their roots from us. Wide load, giant loads, everything they're going to involve. Wasn't an issue when they got their stuff. So, you know, not to start arguments with anybody, but with that being said, you know, a pretty big trust plant for, for us local people, keeping all our workers as local. And I mean, we're gonna put, we're gonna get paid from this. We're gonna put the money back into the economy, back into the community. We don't go anywhere. Our paychecks go straight to this economy, straight to the local grocery stores. You know, HPM is like an Ishihara market, like a Humore's Time Min. We just don't see it because they're in Hilo. In Hilo, their main store, it's, it's like a landmark. You know, and, and we're just trying to bring that here, you know, people, you know, people still, grandpas and grandmas cut their hair to kettos. HPM is the same thing. They've been here forever. They just, they just moving here just because they want to help out more local people. They're not mainland. There's no HPM in California, Florida, you know, and that's, that's why we work for them, and they take care of us, and they treat, you know, I believe, with, with your, with your approval for this facility, we're gonna continue that, and we're gonna make a difference. We just need the opportunity, and I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who can testify? I'm gonna turn it over to Miles, for the likes of any hand, or any people that joined by Zoom, with their hand raised, wanting to testify.
Yes, hi. We do have some people that have raised a digital hand. I'll start with attendee Tara Rojas. I will enable your audio and video. You need to open up your video and also your audio. Go ahead.
Aloha. Okay, so thoughts on this? You know, I support local, you know, companies and support local. However, as I was sitting and listening to the hours of, you know, testimony by me, by especially these three entities, you know, the, um, the petition and this HPM and the ERP guys and everything, and all I could think about was this. Each of these entities, you know, stating, you know, with passion and, you know, defending why they should be the one, you know, chosen or why you should be in favor of them. And the only thing I could think of is this, the same things they're saying is what Kanaka Maoli, and I'm gonna repeat it because we are in Hawaii, is what Kanaka Maoli have been saying all this time, the same thing. Pleading, stating their case, not only for five years that they've been here, five years that they're working here, no, for generations. When is enough enough? And I was just sitting, I was like, how come these three entities, you know, are able to get these special five, 10 minute, you know, long testimonies and able to get this interaction with you all, back and forth, back and forth, questions and listening executive session, and then when recess and another executive session, like, when do Kanaka Maoli get that same respect? When do Kanaka Maoli get to be heard? When does the community get to be heard? Why is it only when companies come in with bells and whistles, local or not? Why is it only then, bells and whistles, money, developers, all these other people, why do they get precedence? And the Kanaka Maoli are always put to the side, could even answer the one question about how many of you on the board commission right now are Kanaka Maoli or of blood are connected to this land? I am not of blood. I'm not of Koko, but I'm born and raised here, and I respect and I'm a Kanaka ally. It's time for what all they've been saying. It's time to hear the Kanaka Maoli and the long-term residents born and raised to leave Hawaii, Hawaii. If after all of this, you're just gonna defer, no sense. I heard that you guys are finally starting to listen, but still, just approve III. This has to stop. We need Kanaka Maoli. We need people connected to the, the Aina and the way with Kanaka Maoli indigenous mindset. We need those people in these positions on these colonized system boards and everything. We need them on, because things will definitely change. This cannot keep going on. Enough is enough. No is no. Please listen. Please make their pono decision. Please decolonize your mind. Mahalo.
Thank you. Miles, is there anyone else?
Recording in progress. Sorry, yes. Attendees. I will enable your audio and video. What you will need to do is click Join as Panelist, and then you can execute your, start your video and mute yourself.
Hi.
Hi, okay, go ahead.
Aloha. I feel like I'm living in a parallel universe, listening to this today. Anybody from any other place in the world would hear 95% of the community saying that they don't believe that this factory should go in Poipu with numerous reasons why. Archaeological, environmental, traffic pollution, you've heard them all. Erasure of the culture, and yet it looks like people sitting up on the Diaz are about to approve this. It is very difficult to understand. It's almost as if the fix were in, or there was an agenda that you were trying to keep up with that nobody else has been made aware of. There is no reason to rush this. There's no reason to put this factory in Poipu. If the gentleman was speaking that works for HPM, wants to continue working there so badly, and I appreciate that, that's his job, this factory could go in Pugi or any place. To put this in Poipu is absurd. Please listen to the community. That is your job. That is your role. Mahalo.
Thank you.
Thank you. T. Martin. Enable your audio and video, and then what you need to do is click Join as Panelist. T. Martin. You need to, okay.
Hi, this is Christine Martin.
Go ahead.
You know, I think that Monica Trask has done a very smooth job of presenting and representing his client. But I have to say, I take exception with the way he painted the residents of Poipu Aina Estates as unwilling to work with them and not accepting of any proposed, you know, proposal that is presented regarding the ag land. You know, we tried to work with them and they went silent. And, you know, we tried to let our voices be heard by filing the petition to intervene as best we could with limited knowledge as, you know, homeowners without a lot of backing or money to put towards this. And when we filed our petition or tried to file, the city counter. At that point, you know, we knew we had to get an attorney so our voices could be heard. And then I just want to address, you know, there's other uses right now that grow farm is just leased land to an organic farmer, right, adjacent to us. 27 acre farm using used, used to grow organic fruits and vegetables. I mean, we, we highly support her. That's a, an example of what the land should be used for, not for this. And I just ask that you would consider taking more time to find out if the assertions that HPM is putting forward are accurate, because I think they're very weak. But thank you. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Attendee Kula Nui Perez. I've enabled your audio and video. What you'll need to do is click on Join as Panelist, and then, okay. Okay, go ahead.
Aloha. So I just want everyone on the board to remember that you're there to work for the community. Your decisions is to work for us, the community, and not these big companies that are trying to bulldoze over all of us. So when you guys make your decisions, you should be making your decisions based on the community's testimonies and on some big wig companies and their lawyer who paid like a $10 subscription to Canva to make you guys a pretty little PowerPoint. This should be, your decision should all be based on what the community has said in this room and on this Zoom. And I just want to close that as my statement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would, that is on Zoom that would like to present any test, that hasn't spoken, would like to present testimony, please raise your digital hand. Seeing none, Jody, turn this back to you.
Very much. So I think we've sufficiently, extensively gone through the agency hearing and testimonies at this point. We have a motion to close the agency hearing.
Move, close the agency hearing.
Second. I moved in second. All those in favor of closing the agency hearing?
I.
Okay, we're back to the recommendation. In light of the testimonies to, Chair, did you wish for our platter to read through the conditions of the initial proposed conditions and possibly some additional conditions to address some of the testimony concerns that were for mainly traffic issues, visual mitigation and noise mitigation, and and did you also want to venture into operating hours? I think we definitely want to hear the conditions, even though we've had them. We've had a request from the audience that they don't have the conditions, so we would like you to read all the conditions.
Sure. Given the chair, as previously stated, there are a total of 12 conditions. Moving on to condition one. The proposed improvement shall be constructed as represented. Any changes to the operation and or the respective structure shall be reviewed, shall be reviewed, but they are determined by the planning commission review and approved required. Two, in accordance with section 11A dash 2.2A of the Kauai Plan Code, applicant shall submit to the planning department environment assessment piece for the project. Three, the applicant is made aware that in an effort to mitigate unforeseen parking issues, the department reserves authority to increase the parking requirements when particular uses cause unusual traffic congestion. Condition four, to further ensure that the project is compatible with its surroundings and to minimize the visual impact of destruction. The external color of the building should be a moderate to dark earth tone color. Proposed color scheme shall be submitted to the planning department for review and acceptance prior to building permit application. Addition five, in order to minimize adverse impacts on the federally listed threatened species, no sheer water and other seabirds, all external lighting shall be only of the fall out of time, not worth facing shielded lights. Any spotlacing upward or spotlighting or spotlighting of structures, landscape in order of ocean shall be prohibited. Condition six, applicant shall develop and utilize best practices during all phases of development in order to minimize erosion dust and sedimentation impacts of the project to avoid problems. Position seven, applicant shall resolve and comply with all agency requirements that are recommended in the permanent application review, including, but not limited to, the fire code requirements imposed by the Kauai Department, drainage requirements of the Kauai Department of Public Works and Energy Division, domestic water requirements of the Kauai Department of Water, and the wastewater requirements of the State Department of Health. Condition eight, applicant is advised that should any archaeological or historic resources be discovered during ground construction work, all work in the area of the archaeological, historical findings shall be ceased, and applicant shall contact the State Department of Natural Resources, the State Historic Preservation Division, and the planning department to determine mitigation measures. Condition nine, to the extent possible within the confines of new requirements and applicable legal prohibitions against discrimination and employment, applicant shall seek to hire Kauai contractors, as long as they are qualified and reasonably competitive with their contractors, and shall seek to employ residents of Kauai in temporary construction or permanent jobs. It is recognized that applicant may have to employ non-Kauai residents for particular skill jobs, where there are no qualified resident possesses such skills. For the purposes of this condition, commission shall relieve the applicant of this requirement if the applicant is subjected to anti-competitive restraint or trade or other non-politic practices. Condition 10, applicant shall implement to the extent possible sustainable building techniques and operational methods for the project, which may include, but not, but is not limited to recycling natural lighting, extensive landscaping, solar panels, lower energy features, lower energy lighting, other similar methods and techniques. All such proposals shall be rejected on the path submitted for building permit review. Condition 11, applicant is advised that prior to construction and or use, additional government conditions may be imposed. It shall be applicant's responsibility to resolve those conditions with respective agencies. And condition 12, planning commission reserves the right to add or give in conditions of approval in order to address or mitigate unforeseen effects this project may create or revoke the permanent property procedures. Should conditions of approval be violated or adverse impacts be created that cannot be properly addressed.
Thank you. And then we also did have some, based on testimony, the department has come up with some other recommendations that we might want to consider. Do you have those?
Yeah. So the, the department has developed couple of conditions to address specific concerns. In relation to traffic, the condition adjusting traffic would read, except for product, except for product deliveries within Kauai Town and Poipu. Truck traffic associated with the subject operation shall be prohibited from entering and exiting Kauai Town and Poipu. Truck traffic associated with the subject operation shall be limited to utilizing all Skinouvihi and on to Monlekiro Road to access Kalmuli High. There is a condition to address noise mitigation. Condition would read, the applicant agrees to limit sound levels from the proposed facility to a maximum of 70 decibels as measured along the southern boundary of the property, where it shares the common boundary line with the Poipu Aina Estates subdivision, and will implement sound mitigation measures necessary to meet the 70 EVA requirement as permitted by required by statutes, chapter 11 dash, section 11 dash 46, statute four. Condition number four of the department's approval, adjusted visual mitigation, however, if you wanted to refine it, there is a alternative condition that would read, in order to help screen the structure from public views and to blend the structure with its surrounding, exterior colors and finishes of all structures, including building roof colors, shall be limited to medium to dark earth tone, such as brown, green or gray, or other compatible, or other colors compatible with the areas in actual surround. The use of reflective materials or colors shall be prohibited. Proposed color scheme shall be submitted to the planning department for review and approval prior to building permit application. In addition, applicant shall prepare a landscape plan comprised of native species or species coming to the earth. So those are the three operative conditions.
Okay. Discussion. Perhaps we can clarify to the applicant, with the applicant, if that's something global, whatever, admirable.
It would be in order, I would also like to hear from the applicant, any corrections that he had to make?
And I would also like to have, have the, we could hear from the applicant of the answer to the question about compressures, because you never had a chance to ask.
Oh, okay, for the record, Monica Trask, there will be compressors. I'm not sure what type of compressor Mr. Hassan is talking about. But like Mr. Olivera said, the compressor that we're gonna use are high-tech sub-contained, and they were included in the, the sound decibel measurements that he, I take it furiously, represent to you. And I would just add, HPM gains absolutely nothing, being disrespectful to this commission. I mean, everything we say is required, it has to be truthful, and it doesn't behoove him to make up the numbers. Those are the numbers. With regard to the conditions, it's not fine. We have no objection to them. And some of the things that I just want to talk about briefly, with regard to just the notice of the neighbors. We, we sent a letter, this is in the affidavit. Certified mail April 5th, as required. They're talking about 30 feet. It says right here, in accordance with section 8 dash 3.1 of the CZO as codified, the applicant's regarding the written notice, the public hearing, at least 12 days prior to public hearing, to at least 85% of owners within 300 per end 300 new rules, both brand feet from the nearest point, et cetera. And there was emails after that, and you got some calls after that initial April 5th letter. So in addition, we sent out another letter. This was not required. HPM wanted to send out, the first one was on my stationery, the second was on theirs. And we explained it further. This was dated April 11th. This may have been what the other gentleman had received on the 20th or something. But that just goes to show that we had sent a letter prior to the required. We sent the required, we sent a letter after the required. We're committed to, to working with this. We'll, we'll talk to the neighbors and what color they want. What earth tones would you like? No problem with that. As far as the, just wanted to address the Hawaiian issue. You know, this, this property that this sits upon was a royal grant given to R.W. Wood by Alexander Legal Leo Camellia the Fourth in 1855. by Alexander Leo Leo Comemia the fourth in eighteen fifty-five. This was crown land, this is what he gave, his own crown land before all the hoopla and overthrowing taxation. That was, that was under Leo Leo's property. He sold it because Latin company had established, they failed, but R W Wood came and he was a doctor and he, they took off, that was Koloa sugar. That was the beginning of the sugar industry in Hawaii. I don't know personal feelings about that, it's not relevant till today. But the king gave and sold it to him. This is not Hawaiian land that was stolen, this is Hawaiian, Hawaiian land that was sold. Um. The, the native species, the desecration, it doesn't apply here, that's tied up with what you've heard. The other developments, the other stuff, that's, that's not within this. And so I just want to correct that as important, as important to the applicant to say that. Message may have resonated, but um, most assured.
So you have no objection to, or you accept all the conditions, the applicant accepts all the conditions?
Yeah, we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, time for the discussion. Now, I would agree with this guy, okay? I, I'm not sure if this is appropriate for, you know, like how we did with Beach House. We asked them to do a physical check and get the reports to the planning department. Status reporters? Yeah. I don't know if that would make a difference. And also we gave them eighteen months where we would review their situation and and see if, if this goes through, what the community has to say in eighteen months. If they have anything new to say or, I don't, I don't know. I think what I, hearing you say is maybe the applicant give us a status report within eighteen, within eighteen months. Um, I think it's a little different than the beach house in that they were an established business and they're not like setting up a expensive. Yeah, because like the condition if, if they were pretty improved. If they were expanding something that was already there, it doesn't have the expense of setting up whole new business. Might, might be a little different factor. But. But a status report. But a status report in twelve or eighteen or twenty-four months would be reasonable. Yeah. Of course, it is part of our condition. You're okay with that, the applicant is okay with that? Okay, it's a condition, yeah, it's a condition. So, and just to, to further clarify, any folks are looking at a twelve month status far, so an annual report? Or is it um within the next, within the period of eighteen months from approval? To provide a status report on compliance of the field? I, I would say twelve to eighteen, within twelve to eighteen months. Yeah, I would agree. Upon completion of building? From start of operation, start of operation. Twelve to eighteen months from start of operation, just, just so we can hear when the community. Make sure that, yeah, where the conditions are being met, make sure that the conditions are being met. Exactly. Because yeah, it would be, in a perfect world, everybody works in harmony. Any other conditions that you'd like added or any other concerns? Discussion points, according? So then, so perhaps we could just summarize, um, uh, I think we're swapping out condition pertaining to uh number four to the language we, uh, that was read. Um. Visual, visual, you know, or take to the visual communication, um, so medium or dark earth tones, specifically brown, gray, green or gray. Um, in addition, imposing a new condition that would be number thirteen regarding traffic that was read, uh, limiting traffic except for product deliveries within Koloa Town and Poipu to Allah Kinouiki and on to Malagia to access Kalamuli Highway. In addition, another condition fourteen regarding noise mitigation on the decibel levels. That was previously written, uh, read um by, by Planter Del Cuau. In addition, it's another condition fifteen pertaining to um the status report due within twelve to eighteen months from the start of operations. To the planning commission related to the compliance, their compliance with the, all the conditions and most. Okay. Any other discussion points? Yes.
Yeah, for the record, my name is Kamau Hassan. So if the conditions are not met in that period, is the applicant prepared to close the house?
Um, usually how that works, so if, if there is ever an issue on compliance, uh, it would be something that could be subject to the order to show cause hearing um and heard before the planning commission on why the permit should be modified or revoked. So, uh, yes, the conditions once opposed for any particular permit is enforceable and um there's a, a mechanism to um make sure that is heard and that, that compliance is done through another hearing at the planning commission here. Thank you. Any other discussion points? Commissioners? Are we ready to move ahead? Somebody want to make a motion?
I, um, Gerald, do you want to make?
Yes.
I move that we approve planning a class four zoning permit Z four twenty twenty-two dash eight use permit U twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash eight and special permit twenty twenty-two dash one to operate an instruction material manufacturing facility in a parcel situated immediately adjacent to the Omeil Sugar, Koloa Sugar Mill in Koloa along the eastern side of uh, you know, E P approximately thirty-three hundred feet west of the Oiliway Road, uh, Pinouiki intersection. Further identified as tax map P two nine one one. Affecting a larger, affecting a three acre, three acre portion of a larger parcel applicant HPM building supply with the fifteen conditions as read into the record.
So it has been moved and seconded, any for last minute discussion? In that case, call question, sure, roll call? Yes. Roll call vote. Commissioner Akop?
Aye.
Commissioner Apisa?
Aye.
Commissioner Osuka?
Aye.
And Chair Cox?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
I, I, I guess I, I do feel a need to say that I did hear the community and I am sensitive and um, it obviously was not an easy decision. This has been an all-day meeting with primarily one agenda item. But I, I do appreciate the input from the community and um I am hopeful that this will all work out peacefully.
I believe that's the, the thoughts of all of the commissioners here, able to stand. With that, Chair, um, we are on, on item N announcements, uh, topics for future meetings, I believe. And, um, our next scheduled meeting would be on June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two. Um, we are hoping for a pretty light meeting in that day. We have uh several zoning amendment measures to be heard that day. Uh, but at this point, um, not, no, no permits at this point. So zoning amendments um on the twenty eighth of June. With that, or I can hold adjournment? We got a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you for those of you who stuck it out all day. Appreciate your patience and your input.
Recording stopped.